Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 24, 2021. Just to reiterate, we do this at every meeting, but it's always good to go over it again on March 12, 2020 Governor Baker issued an executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirements in the open meeting law that be conducted in public so that people can access the meeting physically. And in that case, we are able to use a platform such as Zoom in order to conduct our deliberations. In addition, the members of the public can watch on TV and that information is on a public meeting notice and the meetings are recorded and available to everyone for free. My name is Melinda Collins and this evening I have with me members of the board Katie Conlon, Arthur Doyle, Richard Wells, Michael Zulus, our Town Administrator Michael Dennehy, and our Executive Administrative Assistant Hillary Wait. And also joining us right now on the screen is Attorney Bill Solomon and he'll be joining us in a few minutes for item number five. If everyone would please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next up, we have public comment. So the way public comment works is if you're on the computer on Zoom, you can toggle down to the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. And if you're on your phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And then when you're recognized, you press star six to toggle on and off mute. So we have about two or three minutes apiece for public comment. And if you could state your name when you're recognized and your address as well, and then make your comment. Thank you. And just to let people, I like to let people know how many attendees we have too, because you can't tell. So there are 10 people here this evening so far. So if anyone would like to make a comment, we, the board would be happy to hear you now. All right. I think that's no, unless you just make, there we go. Okay. I, so far, no one has raised their hand, so we will move on to item number four, which is the COVID-19 update. Mr. Dennehy?
Ah, yes. So it was, it came to our attention last Wednesday that Governor Baker had decided to discontinue the community vaccine programs, of which Milton and our Health Department, Board of Health, had a very coordinated effort going on with multiple departments in town administering both first and second doses at the Council on Aging. I mentioned to this board that I was on a call with the Norfolk County Managers at that time, many of whom voiced their opposition to this decision by the Baker-Polito Administration. Subsequently, our Health Director Caroline Kinsella has met with a consortium of Norfolk County Health Departments, Health Directors, and have submitted a regional plan, if you will, called the NC-8, which would be eight communities in Norfolk County to continue to administer these well-needed and safe locations, right? We have a lot of members of our community who feel very comfortable in our Council on Aging, may not have the transportation to get to some of these mass vaccination locations. So they have filed an application with the Department of Public Health to do a regional approach, which would hopefully continue to allow the Council on Aging to administer first and second doses to not only our community, but, but anyone who wishes to choose Milton as their destination for community vaccination. So as of this afternoon, they hadn't heard back from the Baker-Polito Administration. I was on a Mass Municipal Association call yesterday. Both Lieutenant Governor and Under Secretary for the Department of Public Health acknowledged that there were regional applications that were submitted and were being reviewed. So I'm not sure if this board wants to follow through on the agenda item. I was reached out to by Senator Timmeltie, who wrote a very strong letter with support of many of his Senate colleagues to the Baker-Polito Administration, also asking that these local vaccination locations, like the one at the Milton Council on Aging, be reinstituted.
So I actually had checked in with Caroline as well to see where they were in the application process, to see how the board could best support the efforts that they, that the Department of Health would like to, to put forward. And she said she'd like to come in and talk to us when the application, when she has more information about the application and, and what, what will be happening.
Madam Chair, I would be remiss too if I didn't also mention, for those of you that were on the call Monday night at, at town meeting, Representative Driscoll, one of our state representatives is on a committee. The COVID, COVID Committee has been working feverishly as well to reinstitute this vaccination program. And we received a letter from Representative Fluker Oakley that she also has submitted a letter to the Baker-Polito Administration. So all three of our state elects are in support of reopening the Council on Aging for the Health Department to administer first and second doses.
Mr. Wells?
So much for my new shortcut to unmuting. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dennehy, I believe that if this is approved, we would become a regional site, not a local site, even though it would be within our community. It would be that anyone who gets it now, you, you will be a regional site and we're not going to limit to strictly residents of the town. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. So the NC-8 has filed in their application for 4,000 doses weekly, 300 of which would be administered at the Milton Council on Aging, 150 on Tuesdays, 150 on Wednesdays. And if you recall, we, we were struggling to get 100 doses a week.
I was surprised from the governor's visit today to his new site in Natick. It's supposed to have 5,000 capability of 5,000 shots a day. Their, their allowance for today was 100 shots. That, that's pretty amazing for something that's supposed to be a major regional site.
Mr. Zulus? Oh, you're still muted.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, Mike, did I understand that Caroline would, would like us to hold off on, on a letter of support for the NC-8 until she comes in and talks to us? Is that?
That, that's my message that I got today, that, that she really wants to see how it shapes up. She said that this has been a very complex undertaking. And even if you, if you look at the fact that there are 10 doses in a vial, and yet prep mod doesn't line up well with being able to finish up vials if you don't have, you know, if you, you say you, you have an odd number of people or something like that. So I, I think she's, she's looking to iron out some, some details with the other partners in the Norfolk County.
But beyond that, beyond that, she, she doesn't want us now to write to the governor to say, hey, look, we think this is a good idea?
Yeah, that, that, that's what, that's what she said, just to, just to hold off for a little while. Because my, my question was, is there something we could say now that could be helpful in, in pushing this forward? And, and, and and getting, getting the resources that, that she needs, especially if she identified something that was, that we needed in Milton in order to be able to do, say, those 300 doses, or, you know, that, that's 150 a day. So, which is, I guess, more than we've done before. Mr. Dennehy?
Yes, and, and I will say the Under Secretary of, of Department of Public Health, whose name escapes me, was, was very optimistic and they were in the process of reviewing them, acknowledged the acceptance of these regional letters and would, would get back to, I'm not sure if Caroline is, is the point person, or if it, it would be the Health Director in Norwood. I believe Caroline mentioned that the Norwood Health Director, but that, that they were with this, the Baker-Polito Administration was, was looking, looking at them hard.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, I guess it just seems that two weeks might be a fair amount of time to wait. So we should just make clear to Caroline that if this is something that we, she would want us to be in a position to take up next week, that we can schedule a short meeting to take that up.
Well, and I, I think actually, I, I saw late this afternoon that we actually need to meet Monday for a short period of time in order to, I'm trying to remember what, what the issue is. I have to.
Energy aggregation.
Thank you. It's the energy aggregation. Right. There's that, that we, we actually have to approve contracts that we, we didn't know that we had to do until today. So so I will make a note and I, 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 as I said, I've been trying to check in with her regularly on this. Is there, is there anything else? Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Dennehy or? Actually, when is our next testing scheduled? Oh, oh, Mr. Dennehy, when is the next test date for COVID testing?
Ah, we, we don't have one at this time. That was.
We don't.
We, we were, I, I briefly touched upon Monday night at, at the 6:30 meeting. We do have the ability, I believe, for a little over 1,000 doses left in, in the transformative healthcare contract.
Yeah.
But no, no date specified right now.
Got it. Numbers are down, so we, it's good to have that if we need it. Okay, just double checking. Thank you. Okay, on to our, our number five, discussion approval transfer of cable license from Radiate Holdings LP, doing business as RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC to Stone Peak Associates for LLC. So, and we have with us Attorney Solomon. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. The, the board has, and Chair has, a draft decision I put together approving the the transfer, but making very clear that some of the assumptions that are, and the representations made with respect to the continuation of the current management of RCN. And making clear that this is only the transfer of a cable license. It doesn't give permission to use the public way for any other purpose. We stayed in the fifth whereas quoting from Stone Peak's joint application that it will, your community's franchise will continue to be held by the same legal entity, that's RCN. For that hold to your franchise today, it will continue to provide service pursuant to the franchise and the same company that manages the system today will continue to do so. However, it will operate under the ultimate ownership and indirect control of Stone Peak. Upon completion, Stone Peak will combine its resources and expertise with RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC, knowledge of the local cable market and to build upon the success of RCN Telecom Services further hands customer experience. So they are representing there that they can continue the cable service business, because that's why, as you know, board members, that's why we license RCN to provide cable service over the cable system. That's an important part of the the two companies that provide cable service Comcast and RCN, an important part of telecommunications. And it's good to see that they're representative, that they're making a commitment going forward to provide cable service. I should say, as I mentioned at the hearing, that the, the, the need to, to look even further with respect to RCN's interest in continuing to provide cable service is somewhat less in Milton, because they, as, as discussed, have had a significant build out in Milton within the last year or so, adding a good number of subscribers and passing a good number of homes. That speaks well for the, the commitment of the company. In addition to that, we make, make clear here that the, if there's, if there's a substantial change in the proposed transaction, that the board is reserving the right to revoke the, the approval and have RCN in to be heard on that issue, so that we have some protection going forward. And that's a condition of the decision. That's not a problem for RCN. And in addition, if, you know, if they were concerned about that, they'd have a right to appeal, which, you know, will not happen. I think that's important. Now, there's no set date for the close of the transaction in the, in the proposed transaction because of Stone Peak's bringing on additional investors. Normally that would concern me, but here I, I consider a a period of unreasonable length to be a substantial change, subject to which we could either revoke or call RCN in and ask why the transaction hasn't been completed. And then finally, the decision itself makes clear that the transfer of control approval that's provided here is only effective after the transaction closes, so that there's no, the decision's effective immediately. But the, what the decision holds is approving the transfer, transfer of control is only effective upon the closing of the Stone Peak transaction. So in, in total, it was my judgment that, and this is your decision though, but to provide a draft decision would said that Stone Peak has the financial, the technical, the legal and the management ability to operate this system, as they themselves argued, in large part, that's because the licensees are RCN. And at least the, the intent going forward is to manage what's, what is a well-run company from a town perspective. Why well-run from a town perspective? They provide competition. They provide, they also provide some services that are different than the incumbent company, and they provide a high-speed internet service, which is not licensed, but which is a benefit to the town. So that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has with respect to the decision they have to make tonight. And I provided a draft motion if, if the board's decision is to approve the transfer of control tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Do members have questions or comments? Okay. I, I don't see that anyone has a question or a comment, so.
Great. I, I do, Madam Chair, I just have one. Am I able to put something on the screen for just one minute?
Um, Hillary, can we achieve that?
Yes, I believe you're able to do that now.
Oh, okay, great. I just wanted to put on here. Let's get that one second.
And I think I do have a question, actually.
Sure. And actually, I don't think it says no disabled at the moment. But one, maybe proceed with a question and I'll wait to see if that changes. Thanks.
So, um, so, so you said, you know, if the transaction was not closed in whatever you consider to be a reasonable period of time, you know, then you, we, we could, for lack of a better term, not a lawyer, you know, rescind this. But is that something that you'll be tracking and that you'll alert us to? And, and do, I mean, what kind of a period of time would you be talking, just out of curiosity?
Sure. Well, the, the, the challenge for, in these transfers are that, that until all the approvals are obtained, the transaction usually doesn't occur. There could be an odd approval here or there that, that, that doesn't stop the, the transaction closing, but typically any major approval. And those approvals include, for instance, the FCC, Federal Communication Commission, and includes the state of California as a, as a, as a state. So RCN indicates that, you know, that could take, in theory, up to a year. And and, and I, I looked into and thought about the question of trying to do more on, on the restriction of a time period. But my sense was that given the fact that this is a good company that's taking over, which I'll address again in a second, and that the better means to do that was to talk about it, something substantially different from, from the proposed transaction. And in there, there's a process. So I would say that, you know, I, I'll check with RCN consistently, probably month to month. And if after, you know, four, four months or so, there hasn't been a, a closing, I will inquire of them orally or, or in writing as to what the status is and what still needs to be done. And I would update your board and, and my, probably by email as to what that is. So keep your prize as, as you go along, which is a good question. And then I would say, you know, if we, we got toward nine months or so, then we're going to ask some further questions to make sure you're protected. But because the, the transfer control doesn't happen until the transaction happens, then, then with there, there's some protection. I, I thought about requiring, in effect, let me just take a look at one thing here. I thought about requiring further updates from, from RCN, but because Tom Steele and RCN are so hands-on and so available, I decided that rather than put a, put a provision for updates that could be different in community to community, and given particularly RCN's working with Milton to extend their system, that the better part of wisdom was not to put a periodic update period, so they, and, and, you know, Tom is, you know where Tom works and he's, he answers the phone basically 24 hours a day. So, and, and in the decision, if you've seen, that if you would want to rescind it, there's a process for RCN to be heard, to come before the board. So I think it's a good balance that protects the town going forward. Let me just check. I think I can, yeah. I just wanted to mention Select Board Member Zulus had requested and received some information from, from myself through Tom Steele about Stone Peak and, and the primary owner. What I wanted to say, as mentioned before, I believe, that RCN was looking for a buyer and they were going to go put themselves on the market and have an auction. But Stone Peak stepped up and has a track record of, as, as was stated by the council, of investing in companies and growing those companies and not just turning them over to, to, to get the profit from the transaction, but not build something that can continue. This is from their webpage, which is part of what was forwarded to the board, especially that firm specializes in infrastructure investing, which is correct. And then their investments, would, would they say, which, which bears, bears itself out? They invest in what we believe are low-risk traditional infrastructure assets with inflation protection and favorable cash flow, leverage deep industry expertise to the view to implement operational improvements to enhance value. And in my research, that's correct. And with the list of their investments, and I think it's, well, let's see, it's not quite, it's on one page, but they have substantial technological communications, energy investments, and they, they, they keep those investments for a long period. So as a result of the research into that, my, my, my sense was that this is a good move for RCN. And what this decision does, it makes clear that going forward, that the town is protected by the representations in the, in the, in the application and protected by the limited nature of the renewal and the obligation of the, of, of the party that gets control to make sure they comply with your license, which has another five years to run.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Solomon. And so I think we're ready to entertain the motion.
Madam Chair, um, could we waive the reading of all the whereas clauses and perhaps just?
There's a different motion, actually. I'm sorry. I guess I'm the only one who has, so I will read it. Yes.
Very good.
I hereby move that the Select Board is Cable Television Licensing Issuing Authority vote as follows. One, to approve the proposed transfer of control of the renewal cable television license granted to and held by RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC with a license term from October 20th, 2015 through October 19th, 2025 to Stone Peak Infrastructure Partners. And two, to approve and issue the transfer decision and report dated February 24th, 2021 regarding the above referenced transfer of control.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
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 Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate the time. I just wanted to say that, um, Mike, I was also working with Mike on, uh, on make, on doing, uh, continued due diligence with respect to the cable companies in town, uh, complying with their license and checking the, uh, uh, the payments they make just to make sure that they're consistent with, uh, what standards are and to see if there are any significant changes. And Mike's really taken a lead on that and I appreciate that. And I'm working with him as a courtesy to the town to, uh, to, to continue to do that.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, we, we really do appreciate that. And, um, it's a, it's an important, uh, uh, thing that, to happen. So our residents know that, uh, you know, uh, all the contracts are being honored.
Exactly. Sometimes they sit and they shouldn't. So thank you very much. Nice, nice seeing everyone again.
Yeah. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, good. Every, everyone from the Committee on Disability or Commission on Disability here, let me see. Um.
I don't see their chair.
No, I'm.
I'm right here.
She's there, I see her.
I don't see Joe. Joe Prondak, are you here?
Um.
And he.
I saw Joe in the waiting room. Yep.
Oh, you did. Somebody let him in.
Um.
Joe and Alex, can we see you face to face?
Let's see, I don't see Joe now.
I saw him earlier, yeah.
Maybe he took a break.
Um, okay. Well, welcome. So, thank you so much for joining the board. We, we very much appreciate it and, um, and it, it's, I, I think this is the first time since I've been on the board that, um, we were able to have a joint meeting with you, so, um, uh, welcome.
It's been some time and we were just going to ask about meetings, so it was perfect timing.
Thank you. Um, well, um, Mr. Dennehy, I don't know if you would like to start with an introduction. I know that you have, um, probably a lot more interface with our Commission on Disability than, than the board does.
Thank you, Madam Chair and, and members of the board. No, I just, I thought it would be a great opportunity. I had been speaking, uh, with Mr. Tulio Augustin, Ag- Augustino, as we often do. Um, and the issue came up that they were looking for a couple of members. A lot of great work being done, uh, by this, uh, commission. Um, and subsequently you had mentioned it would be good if they could stop in and, and have a chat with us and, and we could get to know some of the new members and, and possibly, you know, uh, broadcast out what a, what a great, uh, commission it is and, and the need for, for new members. Um, it's a very, very active, uh, commission in town, uh, and the work they do is, is immeasurable. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Tulio Augustino has been on this for quite some time. Uh, we have some newer members, uh, I'd appreciate if they could introduce themselves to us. Uh, more often than not, um, this board, um, does excellent work in naming people to volunteer committees in town, but we really don't get to meet them and, and see who they are. So I think this would be a great opportunity, um, for the rest of the town and, and this board, uh, to get to know a little bit of more, of more about this group. And, um, selfishly, I think it could be a, a good sales pitch tonight to try to reach out and find a couple of more members, uh, to, to round this group out. But, um, can't thank this, this commission enough. Uh, Joe Prondak sits on this, um, board as the building commissioner. Um, and, and just, it just, just great work done. I know in pre-COVID times, they would spend, um, nights over at the, the library meeting. But yeah, exemplary work done by this group on, on a multitude of, of things in our town. So, um, Madam Chair, would you like to take it from there, Ms. Augustino?
Thank you so much for your, um, Mr. Dennehy. And you can just shorten my name to Agostino, if you don't want to use Diane. Um, it's a mouthful when you get to the whole Tulio Agostino. And each, this is a perfect opportunity. Um, I want to thank Mr. Dennehy. He did, um, recruit for us one of our members. And the expertise, the various expertise that each one brings is phenomenal. Everyone's different. We do have two openings, so if anyone watches, watching this now or watching a replay wishes to volunteer, um, they can call me at any time or email me or text me or whatever, so we could discuss. Um, it's so easy now that we can do things virtually as well. That's a real benefit to the group. I do want to add, before I let each person give their own little snippet, because they have such an expertise, each one of them. I do want to mention that our meeting, where we have a full, um, attendance. So we have a quorum, it was posted. I did notice that it might be good, I never thought of this because I didn't see it before, that this, um, program, you can now do closed captioning. So you can show the subtitles. So we're going to add to our list, it would be beneficial whenever one of the public meetings, um, is virtual, if it might, when you mentioned that we're recording now, that you also mentioned for anyone who would benefit, that they note the subtitles are available at the bottom of the page. Um, it's great, because I just tried it for the first time myself. Um, yes, Joe Prondak himself recruited me and it's been quite an adventure, I don't even know how many years. It's fascinating to learn about the needs and some of them highly unusual needs of Milton residents. And I'd like to just go around and let each person just give a 15-second synopsis. We do have a new secretary and hopefully we'll be getting some minutes posted for people to see some of the work we do. So Coleman, Coleman Irwin is center screen. And if you could just give us your background, which is awesome.
Hi, everyone, I'm Coleman Irwin. I'm a town meeting member and I'm on the Commission of Disability. I'm the recently elected secretary for the just commission. Um, I am an implementation manager at a software company based in Somerville and bring some technical expertise to the commission.
Natalie?
Hi, everyone, I am Natalie Belmar. I am a registered architect. I also am a professor at Wentworth Institute of Technology in facility management and real estate. And I mostly, uh, teach building regulations, which is, uh, building codes and, um, ADA and such.
And in addition, Natalie, from time to time, has volunteered to do some of the press releases to the Milton Times to put out information so that other people will know that we exist and how to reach us. And then we have our, um, even though she doesn't give us le- advice, we do have attorney Kate, Kate Apotham. Kate?
Hi, I'm Kate Apotham, acting, obviously my private capacity is just a citizen. Um, I am a lawyer, uh, and I've worked in the area of, um, civil rights, including disability for over 15 years. Um, uh, part of my time at the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights in Boston, where we were enforcing civil rights laws, including, um, access for people with disability in schools, colleges and universities around New England. Um, and right now I'm at Wellesley College, um, working as 504 Coordinator, among other things.
Kate, also, in addition to that, she's been phenomenal in preparing any letters that we have to submit either to the Mass Architectural Access Board or with the recent letter that we submitted and we can talk a little bit about later regarding, uh, website accessibility. And with that, we have Alex Rosenberg.
Hi, I'm Alex Rosenberg and I am a federal law enforcement officer by profession, but I'm also a highly disabled physically, uh, individual. I'm a quadriplegic, so wheelchair user. So I, I helped out in that respect too, given another perspective.
Thank you, Alex. It's been phenomenal having your viewpoint on the committee. Um, Alex lives right near Town Hall over on St. Agnes Road, I think it is. And so he, he really helped out in pointing out the unsafe situation trying to cross the streets when the, um, pedestrian lights and the accessible ones weren't working properly. Um, probably saving a life by bringing it to our attention. Um, next we have Charlene.
Hi, uh, thanks for inviting me this evening. My name is Charlene New. I'm a gerontologist and I'm also a case manager with the COVID-19 Task Force. So I specialize in community-based support systems, putting them together for people as they age and delighted to be part of this group.
And last but not least is, while he is the building inspector, he also wears the hat of the ADA, American with Disabilities Act Coordinator, which, while you may not realize it, from time to time, it does require a lot of extra work when someone needs assistance or if we have to find an inter, a speech, um, interpreter, which, you know, going forward for town meeting, that might be something to suggest. So Joe Prondak, can you give us a little update? Because you also interact with MAB all, all the time for us, helping us out there.
Um, hi, Joe Prondak, building commissioner. Um, so yeah, building commissioner for the last 14 or 15 years, uh, as well as a member of the committee. And, um, uh, also ADA coordinator, um, and, um, not really sure what to, what to, what to add to that. Um.
He's just so shy about the amount of work he does. First of all, he deserves a raise, has the inspector.
I'll take that.
He, he does, I tell him that all the time, but unfortunately I'm not one to put it in place.
You want a second on that motion?
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Conflict of interest, it's called, Joe. Joe understates the work he does. Other communities actually have part-time, separate ADA coordinators. And, you know, going forward, there is such a volume amount of work. It's great having Joe because he's dealing with the, um, permitting process and any construction that we, we recently had last summer that we had to address immediately at Milton Academy, where because of COVID, they were building a whole new health center. So Joe understates, I want the board to understand, he totally understates the amount of work and the expertise that he brings, along with each of the other members who are here in attendance and who have spoken this evening. Um, I'm going to challenge the board. As I mentioned, Mr. Dennehy, uh, wonderfully connected us with Natalie. And since there's now five members of the board and we have two openings, I'm going to challenge that with five members, there has got to be someone that at least two of you know, that you could refer, just to talk to us even. Really use someone to help type minutes up. Um, it might seem like a simple thing, but another requirement is that a majority of the board members have some disability. And Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you pointed out to me years ago, when I was roped into this by Joe Prondak, um, I believe even wearing eyeglasses was considered a disability. But Kate, did you tell me that that's no longer considered or did someone tell me? No longer considered?
Not with the ADA amendments, no.
Yeah, with the ADA amendments. Um, so the type of work, even to type up minutes can be both painful as well as time-consuming. Um, so I, I'm challenging the five board members to dig deep. And the reason we really do need the two additional, some of the things that we've addressed had to do with COVID. Residents who have immune issues, immune sensitivity, they really needed to be protected. We had people reaching out to us, whether it was, um, finding our phone number on the website or finding us through our Facebook page, which, um, can Coleman, where did Coleman go? Um, while I'm talking, if, if they can allow Coleman, he's going to put up our pages so that residents can see where to go. So this is the homepage of the Town of Milton website. And under Boards and Committees, right there, you can find the Commission on Disability right there. And you can even link by clicking on the Facebook logo right into the Facebook. However, all of our names are there and contact information. And it's awesome having an IT person who can actually do this, because I could not do it. Um, so we used Facebook as soon as COVID started to promote to individuals, which that was the last time we met with the board. If you'll recall, um, maybe it came in through Citizen Speak. We were discussing just putting snippets of some of the important things like wash your hands, don't touch your face. Back then, masks weren't even being discussed. However, for people with, who were immune compromised, wearing a mask had been common for years. Um, the other thing is the Milton Academy Health Center. We worked both with the academy, with their architects, with Joe. He was very involved because he had to oversee the construction. But we also worked, as you've all praised Carolyn Kinsella. Um, Cole, if you can go up and actually click on the globe one, that was a very informational one. I think that's the one from Stanford. I think there's no words in it, so it's not going to start to speak or we could turn the volume off. But simple little things, both for adults and for children, that we wanted to get the message out because one woman contacted me, children were doing that, you know, ringing the doorbell. And she had a daughter with a heart issue and could not expose her. So when she went to open the door, thinking that it was somebody, you know, that she needed to, um, actually let in, it was just children running through the neighborhood bothering them. So these little snippets, we sent off so to the school department um, so that they could use them to teach children how easy it is to transfer COVID from a young person to an older person, if you weren't wearing a mask, if you weren't washing your hands. As you can see, it's a simple little thing that we found and posted to the Facebook page. Um, and it really, you know, tells a story without even needing closed captioning or wording. So the other thing that we have not done yet this year that we will be doing is our annual town-wide meeting, where we open it up, especially being virtual. Last year's town meeting, we had a state employee, Mr. O'Donnell, I think his name was. The event was tremendously, it, it was only about 15 people, but it was received with such tremendous accolades. However, until the closed captioning gets added to it, um, Mr. O'Donnell doesn't want it played. And we really, we know that Mike over at Mike Lynch at the Milton Cable is working very hard to get that done. We do have closed captioning going forward, but this event was on tape and someone has to try to add the closed captioning. The subject matter was, um, addressing hearing impairments and deafness. And what people don't realize has you losing your hearing and has you getting older. And I only know this because I've sat in with elderly people who have been tested by the proper technicians. And it impacts how your brain connects for you to think. And they informed us that it actually can lead to dementia. And it's fascinating that Medicare does not pay for hearing aids. However, this is a perfect opportunity to point out, only in the last few months, um, because I'm in the insurance business, I noticed Blue Cross and Harvard Pilgrim, it, the supplemental plan to the Medicare, they are now covering hearing aids. Probably because it's so critical for people to always maintain communication with others through hearing or through the closed captioning, both for the social purpose as well as far using their brain, keeping their brain functioning. That's, that was last year's annual meeting. And we hope that maybe within the next six months, we'll be able to play that, um, for everyone. However, this, oh, annual town meeting that we're planning is very similar to what we're doing tonight. We want to talk a little bit about the various disabilities that Milton residents have brought to our attention. Um, I'm sure you have all heard of the young gentleman in his twenties who cannot, he endures severe pain from anything. So he can't have a doorbell ring at his house. He has to constantly wear, um, earphones that completely block out sound. And he's only in his early twenties. There are numerous people that have autoimmune disorders that literally suffer by themselves, socially, at home. And I do believe what we've all learned through virtual meetings and virtual get-togethers is that we can reach out to these people. We can bring them some interesting information or even if it's connecting. Because in the old days, we'd worry about the elderly person next door who doesn't have Facebook, doesn't have email and can't hear people when they call on their phone. And now with this. And now with this, we hope, so that's going to be our annual town meeting this year. And lastly, you, I believe I sent it to Mr. Dennehy. What we've accomplished at our last meeting, we are working to send out to all department heads, boards, committees, any subcommittee head, a two-page letter explaining, and Kate brought this to our attention, for all public websites and actually even private websites. I'm working with my own company, MassMutual, a big company like that. We're meeting tomorrow. They are now making their websites accessible. And so we have a very informational two-page letter. Bob His, the town moderator, provided me today with the spreadsheet of every committee head that he appoints to send out that letter. And I did speak to Mr. Dennehy to, I know that we don't have, we can't use the town clerk's email list because it doesn't specify just the type of people we want to get it to. We wanted to get it to the head of the department. And then if they need assistance, which I know you're currently, are you currently putting together the description for a new head of the IT department? Or has that gone out?
It hasn't gone out.
Sorry, we're in the process of evaluating that. Yeah, it has not gone out yet.
Okay, so we, it might be beneficial, especially with someone like Coleman on our committee, if before it goes out, if we see how it might be added in there that they understand the need to have every town website accessible. And I mean, it's the law. So what we're doing is we're protecting the town by abiding by the law. And Mike, I, Mr. Dennehy, I don't know if you have yet distributed it to all the board members, but if you could do that, as well as if the board and Mr. Dennehy can work to try to get me a spreadsheet, I'll share with you Bob His's spreadsheet, similar to what Bob has. And then the commission will get this letter out ASAP. The other day, when I noticed my husband was, has a member of the Fire Station Building Committee, I was looking at the website with him. And of course, I went right to the bottom. And Coleman, maybe you can pull up the town's website, how it does have the accessibility. And it didn't have the accessibility link. And on the link, there's a disclosure that's usual. And it explains how it is accessible, that it has passed the accessibility requirements. And the only thing, I'm not sure if the Milton website does that we would want to add, is we want to give it a link that, and this is in the two-page letter, and Dan Clock, within minutes, he was able to update the Fire Station Building website, committee website, to include a link at the bottom of the page, disclaimer that the website met accessibility requirements. However, if you had an unusual need, you could click on a link and send a message and ask for extra assistance. I mean, someone who's blind, might really totally blind, might need a totally different means of assistance than the computer. We have people with macular degeneration. You know, I've gone to homes where the computers are specialized computers that allow them to impact the darkness and the brightness on their computers so they can read things. Coleman, if you can pull up Fire Station Building Committee's website. What they also had that I'd never seen, and I don't even know if I mentioned this to you, Kate. I think I might have. They had in the upper right-hand corner, I don't know if you've, any of you have tapped on it, a stick figure. There's no words with it. Actually, if, Mr. Dennehy is the website. Here we are. See the little stick figure in the upper right-hand corner? If you click on that, you have all these options to help improve how you're looking at the website. And our committees looked at a lot of things, and yet we had never seen that little stick figure to ever realize we could use that or we could recommend people use it. And so Dan thought the stick figure did everything. However, it doesn't allow for someone who these options may not meet their needs. So that was, you know, we were both helping each other the other night. And it was expedited since we had town meeting Monday night to be able to make sure, even dyslexia-friendly. Who would have thought that with just a click of a little stick finger, figure, figure, you could get to that? I hope that you'll also share some of our, some of the work we do to meet some of these unusual needs of residents. And the new head of the IT department will be invaluable to our committee and to the residents and basically to every board, committee, and department to make sure that everyone they want, here is what they need.
Mr. Dennehy? Yeah, just to add on to this, the work that's been done by this committee, as a former Public Works Commissioner, when you build a road, when you build a sidewalk, when you build anything in town, the work of this commission is, you can't put a price tag on it. In Boston, there is a full department of paid employees. Everyone who is here tonight is a volunteer on this committee. I can't thank them enough. The audio tactile traffic signals at the corner of Adams and Elliott and at the intersection of Reed's Dale, Canton, and Center are all due to this group participating. In closing, I'll just say, we have a new town engineer, Marina Fernandez, who I would like to put on the Commission of Disabilities agenda. She started with the town on February 22nd, but I think it would be very important for her to participate with this important group going forward and love to introduce her at their next meeting, if at all possible, so that there's coordination between this important commission and the work that Public Works is going to do in helping to build our roads and improve accessibility issues throughout town.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for joining us. And please let us know when the annual meeting is scheduled. I'd really appreciate that. And to each and every one of you, we really can't thank you enough. And especially for taking time out to come and share what you're doing for so many in town. Especially at this time, we really can't see each other. And I think it's easy to overlook the needs of each other. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to get you some new members.
Yes. Oh, I already wrote down a couple of names, so.
Was your husband happy this week? Was your hot, Diane, was Frank happy? For my colleagues on the board, if you're unaware, Mrs. Agostino's husband, Frank, is a very valued member of the Fire Station Building Committee.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Take care. Next up, we have, I think, Mr., I saw Mr. Doherty in the attendees. So I don't know if he's joining us.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay. Good evening, Mr. Doherty. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Evening, and thank you for having me. This is concerning a possible text of a proposed comment on the FAA's Neighborhood Environmental Survey. And just to give a summary of what that, how that came about, what that is. So the FAA in 2016 conducted a survey involving the neighborhoods that were affected by airports, major airports across 20 airports throughout the nation. Logan, on the one hand, was not one of those 20 airports, but it had been a test site for the methodology that was used in the survey itself. So for that reason, it was not one of the 20 in the survey. And so what this motion does is a couple of things related to that survey. And just to give the background, for 28 years, the FAA has used a 1992 study to support its definition of what constitutes, quote, "significant noise impact, significant noise annoyance." That 1992 study found that only 12% of people are highly annoyed by a yearly average noise level of 65 decibels. And therefore, using that standard is a kind of a typical standard to meet if, on the one hand, they think that it's a fairly low population that might be affected. And still today, the FAA declines to prepare an environmental impact statement quite often for concentrated RNAV paths that are proposed. And of course, we've got a pending RNAV proposal for 4L if that 1992-based noise measure of 65 day/night yearly average decibel level is not met or exceeded. But now, by virtue of this study, the FAA's Neighborhood Environmental Survey, published last month, but initiated and took a long time, 2016, finds that 60 to 70%, not 12% of people are highly annoyed at the 65 decibel level on a DNL basis. And I'll come back to that. We have, you know, difficulties with the day/night average, but 60 to 75% are highly annoyed if you're using that, not 12%. And that more than 12% are highly annoyed at a level of 50 decibels noise level. And the relationship between 50 and 65 is not linear arithmetic, it's logarithmic. So that 65 decibel level is 2.8 times louder than 50 decibel levels. And that, so what that means is that the FAA defines noise that is significant enough to highly annoy people that is a 2.8 times higher standard than what it's 2016, now published, Neighborhood Environmental Survey shows, is loud enough to highly annoy the same percentage of people, 12% in that case. So with that, with that background, one key concern here is in their webinars, both for the MCAC, which we requested they give us one individually, and the one they had, I think it was Monday night, to our webinar where they broadcast essentially a summary of what this survey is about. They stated explicitly that they're not committing to any policy change, that this is information of import perhaps, and they're inviting comment. So the motion here has a couple of aspects. One is to say that the survey signals the need for policy change and should be a basis for it because it confirms that DNL is inadequate for overnight, overflight noise annoyance. And, you know, without it, it's just going to be a mood exercise and we're going to have continuing difficulty. Now, in this proposed motion, I did pick out one thing out of the innumerable number of pages of FAA presentation. FAA itself did state in its rationale for the survey, quote, "Aviation noise results in higher annoyance than other modes of transportation." You know, that, I've not seen them say that before. So that's, that much is helpful. And then they go on to acknowledge that the international surveys elsewhere, Europe, elsewhere, generally show higher annoyance than the so-called Schultz curve, and what the Schultz curve is named after its author. Here's the source of that metric that was last updated in 1992. So what this proposed comment says, it's now inarguable that DNL fails to measure noise annoyance of residents subjected to concentrated RNAV path overflights because it's both temporal and spatial, and DNL mismeasures both aspects, right? It dilutes the measurement of noise annoyance during in-use days by adding not-in-use days of the runway. And it fails to take account of noise disturbance contribution during peak time of that continual short interval, flight after flight, with minimal separation. And the proposed measure, the comment measure there, gives a paragraph with a ski slope example that I've given at other times and the highway traffic congestion that I've given at other times. So it does ignore that temporal nature of overflight annoyance. It ignores the increased concentration and compressed repetitiveness of noise disturbance through the skyrail narrow paths and reduced 50-second intervals between overflights. It captures none of those specifics. Now, you know, some people might argue, well, why not therefore keep DNL but try to insist that instead of 65 trigger decibel level, this should be 50? I'd rather, I would rather follow the science and say that, look, we have MIT in its own study that included runway 4L and 4R, particularly 4R, saying that a better measure for RNAV concentrated flights is not DNL at all, but rather the number of flights, that's to say, say 25 flights or more, in their view, at a 60 decibel level by day and 50 decibel level by night during peak days, during those days in the year where the traffic is above average, sufficiently to be in a basket that you would call peak. And determine that that would be a trigger of significance if there were 25 flights or more. And of course, we sometimes have 200 or 300 or more flights a day that would, that would, that would be in that level. So that's that piece of it. And lastly, since we have the pending 4LEA, it's just an additional reason why that should be, never have gone forward at this time for the reasons we stated in the EA comment, and should be deferred until their significance order, which is that order 10501F, is revised and to remove DNL as a noise annoyance significance threshold. And whether it's removed and substituted with 50 DNL or whether it's removed and they would accept something like the MIT survey. I mean, I think that, you know, that would be a subject of whatever follows on the comments and what process they choose to have at their own election. So that's, I'll stop there. That's the sort of, you know, the basis of how the study came about, why it's important and why it's important to try to indicate that they should effect a policy change.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Do members have questions or comments? Ms. Conlon?
Ben, Tom, thank you very much for putting this together. I think we have a good substantive outline of what the letter should be, and we can drop this into letter format. Is there a deadline for filing these comments?
Yes, it must be received by March 15th. And, you know, I've been in my own mind thinking somewhere around March 11, 12 to be sure that it's received.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with bringing 4L onto it and covering that aspect as well.
So our next, we could take it up at our March 10th meeting. And that should be in plenty of time. Mr. Zulis?
Thank you, Tom. And I was going to suggest if we put the, the, the points, the two points discussed in the form of a comment letter to the FAA, perhaps we could post that on the website in advance of the March 10th letter so residents can give us any comments that they have.
Sounds like a good idea.
So my question is, who will, who will put it in letter format? Is that something we, you know, one of you might do? Or, Mr. Doherty, is that something you would prefer to do yourself? I don't, I don't know. Just trying to be clear so I know who to check in with.
I'm happy to do it. Katie, I mean, I'm happy to do it.
If you have the time, Mike, that's great.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I think we have largely what we need.
Yes.
It's really just a matter of formatting and. of formatting and maybe some niceties, but
I think maybe just an introduction
Yep.
before the first point.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, I I thought it was really clear and to the point and I very much appreciate both the background that you gave beforehand, but also the points that you made in writing for for the board. Does anyone else have questions? No. Well, thank you again and will you be joining us on the tenth? Or should we check back in with you?
Yeah, sure. Yes. And thank you for considering this.
Oh, no, of course, we appreciate all your work. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Next. We have the six fifty two Canton Avenue project eligibility letter. If the if the board will indulge me, no one actually stepped forward during citizen speak to talk about this. So I just wanted to give people a chance in case someone had something to say regarding our PL comment draft to to give them a chance to step forward now. Mr. Corcoran? Who recognized? I think you're unmuted. Please. Go ahead and and share your statement.
Can't hear you, Ned.
Yeah. You definitely unmuted.
Is he with us? Why is his hand still still raised?
He'd have to lower that. Okay.
He can hear us.
Right, oops. That's odd. No one else has had trouble. Okay, well, Mr. Corcoran, if you if if it gets sorted out, just speak up, Hillary, I'm not sure if there's something you could do. Maybe put Mr. Corcoran back in the attendees and bring him back to the panelist or something like that. Does he need to be a panelist in order to speak? Could he speak from the attendees?
He's with us as an attendee. Mr. Corcoran, I'm seeing that your mic is unmuted, but not getting any feedback from it. It may be that your computer's microphone is off. But I am that's that's my only guess. I can also try promoting and see if that works.
I'm just aware well, in the meantime, do members have any comments or questions? Since this went up on the website, any changes people would like to make? Yes, Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could turn to page four, please. The second sub bullet from the bottom on that page that begins reading Canton Avenue is a narrow two lane road. I would like to suggest that in the discussion in that paragraph about Highland Avenue, Thatcher Street that we add where we discuss fire police hospital, the council on aging.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member, any other members have questions, comments, additions? Okay.
Chair, I believe we have Mr. Corcoran's sound now.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Corcoran.
Is this better?
Yes.
Oh, maybe I must have had trouble with my computer. I just logged back in on my phone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really hadn't intended to speak, but I did review the draft of the letter pretty carefully. I thought that the points you make you are making are cogent and appropriate and let's hope that the combination of your letter and memo that you are submitting that I forwarded to you help Mass House and get to the right outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. So we don't have a motion written here, do we? No, but if someone would like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve and send the six fifty two Canton Avenue project eligibility letter as drafted and with the amendment suggested by Arthur this evening.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. I would ask the board, could we authorize Hillary wait to use our electronic signatures for this? It's due tomorrow. So is that everyone in agreement? Okay, yes, I am.
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, everybody for your work. So and number nine, we're up to the FY twenty twenty two budget discussion. And I don't know, Ms. Conlon, if you would like to start us off?
Well, Madam Chair, I don't think we really have much more to report on this since our last report. The discussions are ongoing. I know the town administrator has met with the school administration and will be meeting with other department heads and he can weigh in on whether there's something to add there, but the the deficit is three million dollars that we're looking to close. We're looking at the warrant going to print in about a month. So there's a lot to do over the next several weeks and we're in the process of scheduling a follow up meeting for next week with the school finance. I don't think there's much more really in the way of news beyond that at this stage.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one question?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
It's for both Katie and Michael. So the Warren Committee is already aware of this. They're aware of the deficit we're up against?
Yes.
Discussion approval of the stormwater credit system and I believe we have Mr. Berkeley with us.
Yes.
We do. Madam Chair, while Mr. Berkeley is brought into the room, so two weeks ago, yeah, two weeks ago, Mr. Burke and Mr. Berkeley joined us and Mr. Burke, if he's not here with us, there he is. Okay. Fresh off his vaccine trip today. How did it go, Mr. Burke?
Smooth as silk. Thank you.
Two thumbs up. Okay. So just a just a brief reintroduction that the Stormwater Advisory, Stormwater Advisory Fee Advisory Committee had met with this board two weeks ago with the understanding that we would publish the credit system on the town's website. I believe we received twenty inquiries and comments, series of comments from a variety of residents in the town, which was very very engaging, which I thoroughly appreciate. Mr. Berkeley can go into the details of of what was there. Erica De Donato, who is our environmental coordinator, has collected that information, put it into a spreadsheet that I disseminated to everyone. As I anticipated, overwhelming support with many of the comments came what I thought would happen, which was I'm totally in favor of this. What about my driveway? Or, you know, could someone come take a look at at my parcel? And that's that's completely completely respect that and appreciate that. I think that would be the next part or chapter that DPW would would undertake with the with the homeowner. So Mr. Berkeley, if you want to add on a little bit of content to what Erica received in the way of comments and anything that that stuck out to you or that needs to be brought to the board's attention?
Yeah, so that's actually a very good synopsis of what we received. A lot of questions along with the comments that came in relating to specifics about people's individual property. That was definitely a common theme. It usually is when we talk about the stormwater fee because it is somewhat of a different mindset. So typically, when you think about a utility bill, a gas, electric, water or sewer, there's some type of meter involved. And so you're measuring how much people are using and you're charging them based on how much they actually use. So in the stormwater world and in the industry standard, there is no way to really meter stormwater. So we use impervious area instead. So that's really the only consideration. It's not actually the hydraulics of your individual property, but basically just how much impervious area exists. And that's the way to proportionalize your charge versus everybody else. So naturally, you know, we get a lot of inquiries about that issue where, you know, people want to know, well, since, you know, my property might absorb water in some cases, do I am I entitled to some type of credit? But really, these credits are very specific about measures that are put in above and beyond just the normal existence of the property. So people who actually construct either engineered devices or, you know, the case of residential homes, some type of structure or or facility that is designed to mitigate stormwater, not just the natural flow that hits the property. So there were a couple of comments relating to the percentage discussed in the in the credit policy. So I didn't see anything that I would personally say would sway my opinion to change anything based on on how many comments we received overall. And they were kind of all generally in the ballpark, but certainly happy to answer any questions if you if you have any about that. We can talk it through if you'd like.
Does anyone have a question or a comment? Mr. Zulus?
Oh, I was just going to say, last time we were here, I was trying to get, I was trying to see if there was a try to get get some consensus on the percentage. I think Mr. Burke thought it should be lower to benefit the smaller rate payers. He was concerned about the residents. The larger rate payers benefiting at the cost of the of the residents. And so the percentage, the cap, the the limit should be lower than twenty five percent, perhaps twenty percent or lower. And Jerry can speak for himself, but that's just my memory of the discussion. We did receive, you know, some comments on that. We had one in one resident say that he didn't think that the twenty five percent cap was was appropriate. He thought it should be able to go higher because, you know, the resident could benefit. We also had a comment referencing the draft of the Selected Stormwater Fee Credit Abatement Programs to Ponsett Stormwater Partnership from two thousand eighteen, which indicated that the impact of credits on revenue generation is nominal because any credits any the result of any credits is spread across all the rate pairs, which is about eight thousand. So the effect would be nominal. So I think based on the based on the comments and thinking it through, I'm comfortable that the twenty five percent the twenty five percent cap is a is a good balance, but certainly I'm I'm open to be swayed by Mr. Burke. So that's that's just my thought on that.
And Mr. Burke, I'm sorry, I didn't see that your hand was raised until after I called on Mr. Zulus. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and to everyone present tonight. I do have a quick question for Chase. The impervious area is billed to just a total amount of impervious area. Are the homeowner is going to be able to get a breakdown? Like, how much have you calculated for my driveway? How much have you calculated for the front part of my roof? Is that doable? And if, for example, somebody goes ahead and does X, Y, and Z, how are they going to be able to determine if it's fifty percent at that fifty percent minimum?
So we use the GIS system that the town maintains to come up with these quantities in area. And what we could do is is publish the information to residents so that they could view their property. We don't necessarily break down by type of impervious. So it's basically, if you think about like a polygon drawn on a map, it's a computerized way to capture that area. There would be some work on the residence part that they may need to figure out on their own what those approximate square footage is. But what would happen is we would review anything they submit and qualify it. So if if someone submitted an application and made some assumptions about their roof and driveway, we would just double check that.
Okay. So with respect to the comments, we're all in favor of it, but the comments, the impression that I was left with is that there is a great deal of confusion and a lack of total understanding of what it is we're doing. I think that's fair to say. I stand by my comments two weeks ago that for the vast majority of the homeowners, they're not going to be able to benefit from this either because of the the relationship to the amount of money they're going to have to spend in the bill. It's just not going to be worth it. So that takes away from encouraging people to try to do something about it. My decrease in a percentage was only to those large commercial and to those extra large areas. So I think it's fair and it's equitable. And in some instances, twenty percent is going to be a chunk of change. I think you in our meeting, Fuller Village came out and it's a sizable amount. And and to Mike and to Chase, refresh my memory. My memory is that in, for example, with Fuller Village, that each of the individual homeowners don't pay this. That there is some mechanism. I don't know if it's a management company or something along those lines. So it's not, I know that it was not going to be passed along to the individual homeowners, what their their fee was going to be. So I don't know who's going to be benefiting. I'm sure the homeowners indirectly are, but some some other entity is going to be the beneficiary of this. And then the other thing I wanted to ask that you seriously consider is that although many of these large projects may not know of any environmental violations that are present. And if they do come forward and they're asking for a discount, then what I'm asking is that they attest to the fact that their properties are environment are in compliance with all environmental laws, rule and regulations in the bylaws. Now, being on the Conservation Commission, I've learned an awful lot about that area. The one area I do know that that ethically for engineers there's no requirement for self determination or for self reporting. However, it is considered a best business practice. So if the town is going to be in a position or is so inclined to give this discount, then I think that it's fair and it's equitable and very, very good for the for the town's conservation efforts that they attest to the fact to the best of their knowledge that they are in total compliance with all environmental laws, rules, regulations, and bylaws. It may require for them to do an audit, but I joining this, I can see that that this is that if somebody is going to come in, I think it's fair and it's equitable that if somebody's coming in to seek this this rebate or decrease, that they should attest to that respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I kind of like that idea. Um, I I kind of like that idea. Um, uh, having been on the Conservation Commission many, many moons ago. Um, I I uh, I I think the one thing in I I, full disclosure, I chatted with um, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Dennehy earlier today because I I had uh uh some questions, which I I feel like ma- maybe um helped you tailor some of your comments. But we we did get this one comment about um giving a, making a cap on the number of years that somebody could um claim this for rebate, basically. Um, but um, but I think the explanation, and if I'm wrong, just stop me and 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 correct me. Uh, when you talk about some of these, uh, I I mean, it's really something that would benefit commercial um, or, you know, well, I guess Fuller is a commercial use. If you think about the systems that they need to put in and they need to be maintained every single year, um, that uh, you know, that that's not something that necessarily pays for itself because there's an ongoing cost. So did I get that correct?
I would say so, Madam Chair. Yes. So that when, as the properties scale up and get larger, these systems become much more complex. And most of the time, they have an operational and maintenance plan. So, you know, the difference between an average home where you might have dry wells or something, and the amount of maintenance those require as opposed to a regulated maintenance program um that involves, you know, cleaning and removing debris and in the in soils and deposits. Um, it certainly adds to that cost and it is an annual and perpetual cost. It doesn't go away. They they need to be maintained in order to work.
Right. So in listening to what Mr. Burke was saying about the cost, um, uh, and I just had work done uh myself, and it it can cost quite a bit. Um, if you cap it in in the number of years, um, it it actually could be very difficult for people to really recapture some value on that, I I guess. But it's a, it does seem like 50% of your property is something that not a lot of people will be able to achieve either. So um, I think Mr. Zulus mentioned, uh, you know, this isn't a huge revenue generator. This is more of an incentive to help people do the right thing environmentally as much as they're able. So. Yes, Mr. Zulus. Oh.
Someone else, I mean.
Oh, uh, thank you. Ms. Conlon actually raised her hand.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Thank you.
Chase, could you just remind me of what community this policy was based on and what their experience has been with it?
Yes. So this is based on the Newton, Massachusetts uh credit policy. Um, and their experience that they share with us is that not many um properties overall, both residential and commercial, took advantage of it.
Okay. And and maybe you could let us know your thoughts on the point Mr. Burke raised. But my my thought is it tonight, as it was a couple of weeks ago, is that it's it's a good effort. It's an issue that we've been trying to address for a number of years since we put the policy on stormwater in place, which is try to come up with a credit uh proposal that that would work for people and provide the necessary incentives. Um, so I I think I I I'm in favor of moving forward with it. Um, I I am interested in hearing Mr. Berkeley's thoughts on Mr. Burke's comment, but I, this is something that we could always, if we find that it needs to be tweaked or changed at a later date, we could revise a policy. So I I'm hoping we're, we'll be able to move this forward and put this one in place.
Right. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it's Chase. I want to go to your point because it's been on my mind. Um, and ask um what provisions could be put in place to avoid degradation of systems so that the uh objective of the incentive is met?
Well, there is a requirement already written into it to um annually prove the maintenance has been completed. So in order to keep that credit, um, any any system that requires maintenance, they need to submit that maintenance.
Okay, that would be submitted to our environmental office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chase.
Mr. Zulus?
Um, two things. First, um, Chase, could you address uh, one of the comments um asked whether the policy should allow natural features that prevent water from entering the town fee uh system, whether that should be included? Could you just address that? And then I have one, one final suggestion uh from uh on Mr. Burke's point.
Yes. So um, the reason natural features aren't included in this is because the uh concept is that it, the credit policy is basically a benefit to someone who has had to construct something and spend additional funds um above and beyond just purchasing the property.
And then the 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 comment is, uh, seems to me that in the application uh that is uh appended to the policy, we ask the applicant to verify that the information provided is true and cor- correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. Seems to me there we could include and uh, you know, uh, something to the fact that Jerry suggested what, which is that uh and, you know, I I certify that um, you know, uh, that the the property is in compliance with all environmental laws to the best of my knowledge and belief. So so it seems to me we could, we could include that. I, it sounds like there's some um, people were generally in favor of that. And and so I would suggest if we could move forward on the policy uh and 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 have a motion to approve it um with that change uh to the application if approved by town council.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would concur with um what Mr. Zulus is proposing. But I'd like to pick up on something that Katie mentioned, and that was that we review it. So would you might be willing to s- include in your motion, if you are going to propose a motion, that um there'd be a periodic review by the select board? Uh, maybe every three years or something of that nature to determine whether or not the percent is what it should be?
Review the policy?
Yes.
Why don't we, why don't we review within the first, why don't we re- review it after the first year?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I don't know if that would give enough time um for a comprehensive review. One year implementation is pretty short period of time.
Okay.
So maybe two years?
Okay. Yeah, I I think that's, that's, I mean, I I I take your point. I think it makes good sense.
Did anyone second? If not, I will.
Well, I, uh, I haven't made them. I'll make the.
I was just gonna make the motion based on what Michael said. But go ahead. It's you, you added it. So if you make it, I'll second it.
So so I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater credit fee, um, uh, the stormwater credit policy uh with uh with an amendment to the fee application to include a certification uh with respect to environmental and compliance with environmental uh laws to the best of the applicant's knowledge, if except, if approved by town council. Can't imagine why it wouldn't be, but I would say if approved by town council. Uh, and that the policy should, shall be reviewed by the select board uh after the, after, within two years after that impl- implementation.
For a second, I see Mr. Burke has his hand raised, so.
It ju- just um, the language is laws, rules, and regulations and bylaws.
I I take that.
Okay.
I take that.
Okay, I'll second.
So Hillary, I, we'll we'll need to, we'll need to make sure we get that uh, get that language correct. I haven't written it down, but but we'll get it. We'll get it, Jerry. I accept that.
You want another pains and penalties of projury on that as well?
I I copied it down. So, but but we have it recorded. Um, thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Burke for joining us and for all of your work on this policy.
Good evening and good luck and stay well.
Thank you. And thank you to Erica and Donato too for for putting the, all the comments together.
Yes, I'll be happy to pass that along to her. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, could we just, while Chase is still here, thank you to Chase and his entire DPW team for all of their efforts over the weekend with the water main break in on Swanton Street in East Milton that impacted an awful lot of people and for the quick response and the great response.
Yes, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. McCarthy were there the entire time. So um, it was, it was well looked after. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might, um, I I will note that the chair uh offered coffee and donuts to them. Um, at at which point Mr. Berkeley mentioned today that uh Hart Dental uh actually offered a food truck down there for the crew. So uh, great shout out to Hart Dental for their um, their empathy and concern during during that. So.
The only thing missing, Chase, was that it wasn't 20 below zero. That would have made it an awful lot different. I actually, just a point of, so my water, I thought the pipes froze. So I went down, I started heating the pipes in the cellar until I figured out that it was a water main break.
Yep. So we we explain it that it's very similar to when someone's in the shower and someone flushes the toilet in the other room, just on a much bigger scale.
Exactly.
And and just from a DPW's perspective, to to put it uh in relation to what's going on in Texas, I think I heard that Houston, Texas uh based on the last freeze, they had had 250 water main breaks to catch up on. So um, pre- pretty significant damage. And we all saw the damage that took place on on Squanton Street. So.
Unbelievable. Well, thank, thank you again. And.
Thank you, everybody.
Hope you have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night. Once, okay, um. Number 11, the Historic District Study Committee. Um, there's not a lot, uh, I guess, that we necessarily need to do at the moment. I um, I did contact Mr. O'Donnell, and as you saw, he provided us with um, he very kindly drafted a letter for us that would go to um the Society of Architects and the Board of Realtors. So we had, they they have 30 days to give us two nominees from which we can choose. Um, and after that 30 days, if they don't send us nominees, then we would be able to um, to appoint whomever we wish. Um, so I also drafted um, a a a press release based on some of his comments. And I believe you had access to his email to me too. Um, the one thing that we haven't done that I can't find a record of is deciding how many members we wish to appoint. I'm not sure we wish, we need to do that this evening, but it's between three and seven. Um, and um, and I'm, I I'm happy for people to edit the press release now or send me edits, thoughts. Uh, but but I am curious as to um whether the board feels it would like to decide how many members now it's looking for for the um, the study committee, or if we should see how many applications we get. Oh, and I I wanted to say, we also got a a short list of people uh who I can contact. They're from Mr. O'Donnell and offer uh an application if they'd like to, if they'd like to apply. Um. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, two things. I may not have the correct recollection, but somewhere in the back of my mind is a suggestion that in prior discussion, there was the notion of um, not many people be able to come over onto this body from the historic uh commission so that maybe only two people would be from that entity.
One, I think.
One?
I I I think one um is is uh, is the most that M- Mr. O'Donnell is really eager for us to to get um a diversity of perspectives. And so his feeling was that one, also, I I think they're a bit challenged for time as a group.
Okay. So the concept applies and um, I'll just propose for the sake of discussion, uh, a five-member body.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Mr. Wells?
My thoughts exa- exactly. I had five on my mind. It's just not that busy. And I I'd second, if I was to make out a motion, we can move this tonight, I would second that.
Consider it done. And Madam Chair, I have a second point. Um, so that I don't forget, in the third line.
Yes.
Um, I like to suggest where it reads, whether to establish one or more historic districts in addition to those already in existence.
Do we have any, do we actually have any that are?
You live in one.
Oh, that's right. I do. I do live in one. I forgot.
We did the signs.
Yep.
How could you forget, Rich?
We had town meeting this week. Give him a break. No, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I I I I think that's very helpful. Um, do we have a date by which we would like to get applications in or or a period of time depending upon um when we can get something in the paper and up on social media would be faster and and the website?
How about April 1st?
April 1st?
It gives you five weeks.
It's my son's birthday. Um, it's a good day. Um, that's great. And um, and so if if um, if members agree, then I can um Jen McCullough uh has offered to help me work to get uh these things out and up on the website. And so, okay. Well, that's great. Thank you all very much. It's exciting. Um.
Madam Chair, do we need to vote on that proposal?
Sorry about that. Um, Ms. Ca- uh, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, I got so excited. Um, okay, great. Um, town meeting articles. Um, so I'm not sure if we really are, would like to discuss these now. I do see that we had um from the Board of Assessors, uh, um, a a new one come in today um around the circuit breaker. They had, I believe, put that in once before and then withdrew it and and it's back, although it's not here on our list. Um, does anyone uh wish to to um to discuss or present any articles? I know, Ms. Conlon, you've been working on the Town Administrator Legislation, just um some of that technical fix there. Um, and Mr. Zulus, uh, the Broadband Committee um, uh drew up one for municipal light plant. So I I don't know if either of you would like to say something about those.
Well, the municipal light plant we approved, I believe, for the warrant last time.
Okay.
Is my memory.
Yeah, no, it's 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 in there, but we have just, we, just in case people would like to talk about them at all.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll probably have the, the, the broadband committee will probably come in in the next month or so and make a presentation.
Okay. Oh, that's good. Uh, Mr. Wells?
Katie, other hand up for her.
Okay.
So, well, two things, Madam Chair. One is on the Town Administrator Legislation. I circulated um a draft memo to the Warrant Committee to kind of walk them through what the changes, because it is just a very technical change, um, an unintentional change was made during the legislative process in which it inadvertently by moving a comer and and a couple of other words around, we ended up with a different meaning than what was intended. So this is really a technical fix along with some other small changes, since we're taking the opportunity to make that technical fix. But I I thought it might make sense to give the Warrant Committee something in writing so that it it at least informs their discussion whenever they do take these articles up. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to read that memo. Um, I think we should try to get it to the Warrant Committee sooner rather than later for an agreement to send it. Which gets me to my second, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Take.
Yeah, unrelated to this. I mean, my second comment was related to the warrant generally. I thought somebody had something on the Town Administrator article. No?
Does anyone have?
Okay.
No, I I thought it was an excellent memo and and um so I I I would be happy if we could just send, uh, Mr. Wells?
Do we need to, you want to vote that tonight, Katie? Do you want us to vote that? And get, let's get it done?
Yeah, I think if we can, that would be, that would be great. And we could just date it as of today and get it up to the Warrant Committee tomorrow.
I'll make a motion for that as written, Madam Chair.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And thank you again for drafting both the articles and the comment.
Just one point, just as a placeholder, not yet, but I believe we will have an article on that fire, on East Milton Fire. At some point, not too distant future, I hope.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, that actually brings me to my second point, which is, one thing I think that we need to think about is we have a request today from the Board of Assessors to add an article. It's really, really late in the process to do that. Maybe it makes sense to add it this time, but there's a reason we have a hard and fast deadline in January for articles. Now that said, because of the special town meeting the other night, and that the fire project being somewhat in flux, you know, I think, as Richard said, there may be a need for, you know, other articles based on the town meeting discussion the other night. But we have, I think Mr. Dennehy said we're already up to 52 articles, and if we're looking at another remote meeting in May, which is something I think we should talk about, that's a lot of articles for a Zoom meeting, and we ran into a lot, I think, and I suspect many of us would agree, we ran into a lot of challenges with the Zoom meeting the other night, because it's really difficult to try to have a, you know, to try to respond to comments that are coming from the floor when everybody's trying to dial into a number, and we're not there physically in the room. So with only three articles, we had a pretty long meeting the other night. And we know we have three Planning Board articles going forward, we're already hearing a lot about accessory dwelling units. So I think with the number of articles we have, and with some of the substance, including the fact that we've got a budget where we're still looking at a $3 million shortfall, I think we should be thinking about the number of articles that we're submitting in May, because it's very different than last year, where we really tried to focus the June meeting on the budget and do a separate July meeting. And I'm not necessarily advocating that we should do a separate meeting, because there are costs associated with it. But I think we need to think, as we're going through this warrant process over the next month, if there's something that we think is either not fully ready, or not fully vetted, or is just going to make this go to six nights on Zoom, then I think our board needs to be thinking about whether there's something we remove from the warrant. So I just wanted to throw that idea up there, because we've had, in the not-too-distant past, we had a warrant, we had an annual town meeting to go six nights, and that's in person, but it's so much more challenging in the Zoom environment.
Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, I agree. I think once we get to the warmer weather, and whether it's Zoom or outside, for us to go near anything even more than three nights, we're going to have a hard time, I believe. It's just cabin fever is bigger than, I don't know if some of the national news today, and just the pressure the Florida and some of the southern states are getting, because so many people just, and I think once the temperatures warm up here, that we'll have a hard time, I agree. I think whatever we can thin out and move off, we should, and to Katie's point, should we think of closing it now? You know, maybe in the next week, because I, I'm just throwing it out there. What do you think?
Well, it is, it is closed, and I mean, if you, looking at our calendar, that, although I don't know, Hillary, I think maybe, I'm not sure that this calendar is really the one that we're using. I think you said something about dates being built in for the printer that aren't applicable anymore, but so articles, you know, that were approved for inclusion are supposed to be, you know, in January, and I know the budget isn't hammered out, but we know that, we know all the articles for the budget that go in. It's a matter of hammering out what the appropriations will be. So we're already past that time, and I think it is, you know, we have some discretion to accept more articles, but I really take Ms. Conlon's point, and there's a reason that we had moved Planning Board articles to the fall, because they are technical, and they really require a lot of time for people to dig into them and to do that on Zoom. In addition to, the budget can be really challenging. So I do, I do take that point, and somewhere in the back of my mind, wonder about when it will be safe and appropriate to go back to an in-person town meeting. But, and I'm looking at the time, it's nine o'clock. So that, those are all very good points, and I think this is a discussion to be continued. So with no further, yes, okay, let's move on to the next item, please. So the next is Discussion Approval Easement related to Pine Gardens Way, and we have our Town Council, Mr. Kevin Freitag with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Kevin Freitag, Town Council, members of the Select Board. This is a pretty straightforward easement agreement in favor of the town in what will become Pine Gardens Way. It is simply so that the town will have continued access for the maintenance and repair of a water line, a fire hydrant, a street light, and emergency access on Pine Gardens Way. There's not much more to it than that, so it's just before the board tonight to approve and to execute. Unfortunately, this isn't one that you can authorize Mike Dennehy to sign. It'll have to be signed by each member of the board. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
This is the new development, correct, Michael? Are they just by metrakuses?
Yes, just beyond it.
Just by Dean Road, yep, correct.
I'm fine.
Is there a deadline by, because I noticed this is a notarized document, is there a deadline that we all have to get into Town Hall?
I'm not aware of a specific deadline, I think it's just something that, you know, at the earliest convenience of the Select Board could be executed, that would be, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I move to accept the grant of easements from HP Homes LLC as presented by Town Council?
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Then next is approval of the inter-municipal agreement between the Town of Milton and Southeastern Regional Services Group. Are there any questions or comments on this? Mr. Dennehy?
Very quick introduction. This is a consortium of work that the town participates in. This is the annual Southeastern Regional Services Group Municipal Agreement that we participate in. It's generally public works related. It has to do with a lot of the materials that we purchase. So Milton doesn't get the best prices in the world, because we don't order in bulk, like some of the larger municipalities. So this group was formed a couple of years ago. It's been very successful for the town. We see some very cost-efficient prices, driven by the fact that we are in a group of southeastern mass communities. So it is bid on a much larger scale, and this is our agreement to join that municipal agreement.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the inter-municipal agreement between the Town of Milton and the Southeastern Regional Services Group, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Thank you very much. So next, we have the appointment of Robert Cormack and Tricia Poles to the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Robert Cormack of 154 Bradley Road and Tricia Poles, 24 Victory Avenue, to the Bicycle Advisory Committee with a term expiring February 28th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, and thank you both for joining the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
I see Mr. Toma here. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. Toma and his support of all things Milton. I know the Bicycle Committee is near and dear to his heart, but I see him as an attendee here tonight. I just want to acknowledge him and thank him for all of his volunteerism.
Yes, I second that, and thank you, Mr. Toma, for reaching out to your new committee members. I really appreciate your doing that. So I'd ask him to do that. Okay, excellent. So next, we have a reappointment of Paige Appolito as the Privacy Officer. So I'll just make that motion to reappoint Paige Appolito, 525 Canton Avenue, as the Privacy Officer with a term expiring February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis? Ms. Collins, yes, thank you. And next, we have the reappointment of Marion Driscoll and Stephen Geister to the Traffic Commission.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to reappoint Marion Driscoll and Stephen Geister to the Traffic Commission, with a term expiring February 28th, 2022. For the record, Marion Driscoll was the first person I ever recommended to be on a committee when I joined the Board of Slackman and other Slack, or Slackman backed down the Slack Board today. But brilliant, as Mr. Dennehy knows, a brilliant mind in traffic operations. And I'm very grateful that she said yes when I first reached out to her.
I'll second Richard's motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, and I do see that there are no addresses there. I don't know if that's something that's absolutely necessary or not, but okay. Next, reappointment of Paul Hopkins and Walter McDermott Jr. to the Radio Amateur Communications Emergency System.
I'll move to reappoint Paul Hopkins and Walter McDermott Jr. to the Radio Amateur Communications Emergency System with a term expiring February 28th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Absolutely.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, thank you very much. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes, and then we have Finance Committee minutes for the Select Board members who are there, so.
Madam Chair, I think the only edits that I had were just on the February 17th and February 18th minutes. We just need to add the time that the board went into executive session, which I think is probably already in the executive session minutes, and it's just a matter of adding them in the open session minutes.
Okay. So why don't we move to approve the meeting minutes for Select Board meetings, dates 1/13/21, 2/21, 2/17/21, 2/18/21, subject to adding the times that the board went into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And let's see, so Arthur, I was here for all of these. Were you at all of those meetings?
I was at three of them, I believe, Madam Chair.
Okay. Which three?
Are you talking about, how about the Finance Committee?
Finance.
I can look those up and let you know.
Okay, well, then we'll vote those next time. I don't want to, I don't want to slow us down.
But I did read them, and they were fine with me.
Okay, well, but I just didn't want you to be voting on something that you weren't at. That's the only reason that I wanted to.
I think that's true for Richard, too. He may not have been at.
Richard hasn't, you haven't been coming?
I was at one, one.
Do you know which one you were at?
No. It's two weeks ago. It's the one way, Arthur wasn't, I made a motion, remember, Michael, I made a motion, too. That we just said we moved. That was my, after my motion failed, that was my, that was my sign to exit.
Can we just vote them as the Board?
Okay, that's fine with me. I didn't know.
But the Finance Committee hasn't voted them yet, but we're going to take them up at our.
Okay.
Could I just make one, one, on the January 7th minutes?
Yep.
At the, at the bottom, where it references the motion, where it says 225,000 of CARES Act funds, this is the second line from the bottom in the last large paragraph,
Yep.
to be used for school bus expenses, and then I would take from three lines up where it says to increase the amount of in-classroom learning for elementary students. That was really the motion. So it would, so it would read, $225,000 of CARES Act funds, CARES Act funds to be used for school bus expenses to increase the amount of in-classroom learning for elementary students.
Okay, I'll make that change for both the Finance Minutes and the Select Board Minutes. They're duplicates of each other, it's just that we were told we have separate minutes.
Right, okay. Thank you. So I move to approve the Finance Committee minutes with Select Board in attendance for 11/18.
I think, Madam Chair, there's Select Board Minutes, since we had a.
They are Select Board Minutes.
The Finance Committee is going to vote them separately.
Right, and that's really what I meant, so thank you. So I move to approve these Select Board Minutes in attendance at the Finance Committee meeting for 11/18, 20, 11/25, 20, 12/4, 21, 7/21, subject to the amendments or edits proposed by Mr. Zulis, 2, 3, 21, and 2/9, 21.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, thank you. So, future meeting dates, it seems that we need to have a quick meeting at some point on Monday in order to approve contracts. So I think Kevin maybe would be a good person to explain this to us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Kevin Freitag, Town Council. This afternoon, I spoke with Scott Mueller, who is in-house counsel for Good Energy, which is our energy consultant and is in the process of the procurement for electricity service agreements for the Town of Milton. That process is going to culminate with bids being received and opened at 12:45 on Tuesday, March 2nd. And what will essentially happen is that at that time, they, there will be at least three, possibly four bids from various, for various suppliers. The, our consultant has put together contracts with each of those, potential contracts with each of those suppliers, and those contracts are subject to some negotiation, but Good Energy has used them considerably and consistently. So they're in very good shape. There might be a little bit of tweaking that needs to be done, but they're in good shape. And one of those four contracts will be used, depending on which set of numbers from the supplier comes back is the best, you know, the best set of numbers for the Town of Milton, and Good Energy is going to weigh in on that. So at some point on Tuesday, probably mid-afternoon, Good Energy is going to contact Milton and say, we receive these, we receive these bids, here's what we suggest, and at that point, Milton is going to need to be able to select that supplier and execute that agreement. The numbers that are proposed at that point will only be good for a few hours, in fact, so it has to be done before the end of the day. So what I think would be appropriate is that on Monday, there'd be a short meeting of the board to have essentially two votes, the first to just review and approve the four potential, or three, three or four potential contracts, only one of which will end up being executed, but at least to have the Select Board's eyes on all of them to say, yeah, these are okay. They'll all have been reviewed by myself and by counsel for Good Energy at that point thoroughly. And then also, I think it would be appropriate to select a a member of the board to act on behalf of the board on Tuesday afternoon to execute a contract with whichever supplier's numbers come in the best, as recommended by Good Energy. That way, you'll be able to move as nimbly as you need to in order to secure that that contract with the supplier by the end of the day on Tuesday. So that being the case, I think it makes sense to have those two votes be addressed at the meeting on Monday night.
And I think, Kevin, you also said that Mike Dennehy could sign if the. And I I think, Kevin, you also said that that Mike Dennehy could sign if we authorized him.
I think that that's fine. In fact, whomever the board wants to authorize, they could authorize. So Mike would certainly be um be in that position. And again, it's um at that point, Good Energy will have a recommendation put in place. So you're really, you know, the the authorization would, I think, would be pretty narrow. It would be something like to uh, execute the contract as recommended by Good Energy. So you know exactly what you're authorizing on Monday night. Um, and you'll have already seen all four of the contracts that are are the potential contracts. So you'll I think you'll be in a in a pretty good position on Monday night to have those two votes.
Okay. Um, so um, sorry. Is there a time of day on Monday that works for people?
It must be flexible on Monday.
Well, I have to go to New York to a funeral on Monday, so this just came up today. Um I should be back on Monday night, so, but don't do this around me. I mean.
Yeah, as long as we have a quorum, it's okay. So and then you don't have to feel pressured either.
Right, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
I apologize. We've been waiting for two years for this, and unfortunately, now this this slow stream has become a fast-moving current. So I apologize. This documentation came over today. Kevin's been doing great work on this with 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 their counsel, and and we all know all the work and uh, effort that John O'Rourke has done with this. Um but I, so I apologize, but it is, it's it's a fast-moving current from here on out. You've joined us with the marketing campaign that that's clearly underway as well, so.
Right, right. Yes, they they, we had a nice meeting today with Daria and John, um, and the Sustainable Milton folks, so um, so, yep, they continue to work hard on this, and um, uh, so is there, is there a time of day that Katie has said she's flexible? I'm look at my schedule on Monday, which you should have done. Um I'm, I'm pretty flexible, too. I could, I could make a lot of different times work. Uh
Three of us are flexible then.
Do, uh, do we want to do it? Uh, we, I think we have School Building Committee at seven, so do we want to do it at, can we do it at five thirty or six?
Fine with me.
That's good. Five thirty?
Five thirty, yeah.
Yep.
Five thirty. Great.
So if I'm heading back, Madam Chair, I'll just do it from the car on the way back.
Well, thank you. Richard, appreciate it. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next we have Town Administrator's Report.
Um, nothing to report tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. I I do not have a report. Um, Ms. Conlon, do you have a report?
Uh, well, I wouldn't really call it a report, but I I do want to thank our former colleague, Tom Hurley. I called him on what day are we? Today's Wednesday. I called him Tuesday morning after the town meeting on Monday night just to let him know, and he was very pleased to hear that the fire station project was moving forward, but um, just to let him know that hi- hi- his name had come up at town meeting a couple of times and that um, all of his efforts on special legislation several years before um came to fruition, and and sometimes that's how it is. You serve on a board, and then it may be a few years before something that you worked on really plays itself out. So um so thank you to Tom Hurley for all of his good efforts.
Katie, does he still have the same cell number?
You're mute, Richard.
Is his cell number still the same, Tom?
I think, I think it is the same. I can get it to you if you wanted to reach out to him.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Doyle, do you have a report?
Nothing. I can't wait until later time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, I just want to uh, note that this is a sad anniversary today. Anyone who lived in this town twenty-six years ago today will remember a tragic accident where the state troopers were killed, where they were the pilots of a state police helicopter, Paul Perry and James Mataliano. And they hit the Harvard Boathouse. Um, they had a couple of uh technicians from Verizon that were flying out west to work on the statewide communication system, and um, for the record, Jimmy Mataliano's dad was the police chief here for many years. His, his twin brother, his twin brother Jerry is uh, Lieutenant Detective of State Police and in DA Morrissey's office has been there for many years, and his three sisters uh, all live here, Roberto Lambert, two of them employed by the public schools, Susan Higgins, a long time at the PS, and Jean Mataliano, the quietest but most like her father and mother, uh, who's run at high school for years, but it was on the news today, and it was a very sad, it was a huge funeral at San Elizabeth, and I'll never forget it. Governor Walmsley's governor. A very, a tragedy that um, a lot of people will forget, but um, was was recognized tonight. I just want to make mention, and I I think the Mataliano family will always be grateful for how this town turned out for their son when uh, when he was buried there. So I just want to mention that, that, of the anniversary. Thank you.
Mr. Zulus? Report?
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. See, uh, future agenda items, I think that we've been collecting those as we've gone along. And um one thing, I I haven't drafted a letter yet, uh, as we've done with the other forty Bs for six forty-eight. That's the next one coming up, so I will have that ready for the the next, the next regular meeting. Um Mr. Dennehy?
I have two. I I'd like to introduce this board and and the Town of Milton to our new town engineer, Marina Fernandez, and uh, received an email from the clerk uh, regarding annual town meeting referendums uh, that due to her. Um, so that would need to be taken up um, on the tenth.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I thank you, everyone, uh, who's joined us. At this time, um, I move pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Subsection A, Subsection Six, sometimes known as Purpose Six, to consider the purchase exchange lease val- or value of real property based on my belief that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. This is specifically with regard to the parcels um, uh, at four thirty-two Adam Street, five twenty-five Adam Street, forty-one War Street, and three thirty-four Edge Hill Road. Um, and we will not return to open session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
I'm sorry, yes, Madam Chair.
Quite all right. Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you.